The United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll ask our clerk to determine if we have a quorum.
We do, we have five present and two in absent, so a quorum is present.
First item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. We have a couple of additions to the agenda. To, let's make sure I get this right. We have an additional addendum to the consent agenda which everyone was handed here ahead of time ready for the meeting for a leave of absence for Eric Zinter. So that won't require an extra action, but it is added inside of the consent agenda. We also have two items that will go under section eight B. They'll become items nine and ten, and again, board members will have found that sitting in front of you when you arrived at the meeting. These are both finance committee items, one for approval of the Fairville High School Fitness Center addition and one for the parking lots for Jefferson Roosevelt Middle School. We'll tackle those as we get to item number eight in the agenda. So, moving along, I guess we need to approve the agenda. So, I'll enter the board, chair will entertain a motion at this time to approve the agenda with the amendments I just spoke of.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion?
I wonder if we could add what the groundbreaking, you know, step late, but maybe early, right after that B recognition and awards on the groundbreaking.
Would you like to?
Yeah.
Maybe I'll ask you, Richard and Deb, to comment on that, I think that'd be great.
Okay, Todd was there too, he had a shovel and a hard head.
That's great, we'll make sure we talk about that as we get to that next as well. Any other questions or comments on the agenda? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose aye sign, motion carries. This brings us to community comment time. For any members of the community who would like to come forward and speak.
Oh, number three.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped right over number three, we were talking about it and I forgot about it. Forget the community comment, your time will come. First, we have recognitions and awards. I'm told we have a few members of our Avid program here tonight to give us a little presentation. So, please come forward and show us what you've got.
Thank you for letting us come because we're kind of bragging about our program. I think the last time I talked to you was last fall when we were going through the whole integration plan again and we were talking about Avid. So, we've had our first year and we've had some struggles, but we've, thanks to Mr. Grabguard, we've gotten through our first year, I think, quite well. And he is going to introduce some of the students to you that have come and some of the students have brought their parents as well. So, we would like to honor them by being the first Avid class in Fairville schools. When, a couple of weeks ago, our state district director for Avid came and she called them the pioneers. So, they are paving the way for the rest of the Avid classes that will be starting next year. So, I will let Mr. Grabguard introduce the students that have come and I have a few testimonials I'd like to read at the end.
Okay, so I'm gonna up. Just, you know, I am being a part of writing this program. We've gone up and down, it's new and we're kind of finding our way. I personally believe it's a very good program for the kids. It's been challenging for them, maybe they will say some, I don't know, the quiet ones are here so I don't know how much they want to say, but I think it's been excellent here and hopefully it'll get better and better as we expand this seventh grade and eighth grade. They'll just go through to high school, I do believe it's a good program. So, starting here, these are about third of the class right now, they're about third of the class. So, Eric Gailey, Samantha Johnson, Kaylee Moore, Sydney Linkett, Vivian Maseas, and Hunter Dunes, and Jordan Allen. And you guys, maybe you would have some comments, I totally didn't have to say comment or anything. I know there were a few, there was a band concert, we had a couple who really wanted to write stuff down, that's what Ms. Screw's gonna read. They're not here because they had to go to the band concert at six thirty. But, maybe you guys have a question for me, if those four are for any of them.
First, I'm interested to see if any students have anything to say. I promise this looks intimidating and no, we're behind a certain threshold. Sorry for that, but I promise as a friendly crowd, we'd love to hear anything you have to say.
Is Andy now?
I'm a teacher, so I can sit and wait in silence for a long time.
Well, I know before I was having some struggles before with school, I can honestly say. Once I joined Avid, I found it was a really good program and it helped my grades get up a lot. And I really thank Avid for that, it's a really good program. So, yeah.
Thank you. I totally didn't have to talk, so I don't know.
Well, I'll just ask a question, then you mentioned earlier, you know, it's the first year of the program and there were some challenges, I'm sort of curious what those were and how you look forward to addressing those in the future? It's typical for a first year for the B challenges, so.
Some of it was our, I believe in Google back, some of it is some of the selection process. I mean, we have lost a few students. The rigor of the program, you guys will tell it, it is pretty tough. They do have to take advanced math, which is a big jump for some of them. And we're looking, you know, basically, we're having an algebra bridge program this summer. The kids coming from the seventh grade to the eighth grade can help bridge that gap a little bit. I believe that was the biggest one, you know, maybe doing the homework and getting, you know, used to having to do the homework and some of them have been pretty diligent in doing that and for others, we've struggled with that part, but I think some of that kind of refined the process of selecting our students.
What kind of commitment do the students have to make?
It's a lot, I mean, they're asked, they're supposed to do homework, you know, hour and a two every night. We take Cornell notes, five format, where they take the notes, left-hand side, you know, write down the questions, they help them study higher level questions. It involves a lot of different tutorials twice a week, where we have tutors from people in the committee here. There's a few from St. Olive, our student St. Olive Carlton. We were just in St. Olive Friday. Come on over, and they have to sit down, I can think, what kind of question do I have to come up? What am I, what don't I understand, so they have to go in, basically, process of what aren't they understanding? Kind of got hard, hard on them, we started out with the real, little easy forms, what are you having problems with? And now we're trying to get it where they have to really try to say what don't I understand, what is the process to do that more than.
You know, a couple of weeks ago, we invited the parents and some other staff from the schools about, to witness a tutorial session, and so we had them set up in the middle school cafeteria. And Joanne Olstrup came, and she had been at Summer Institute with us last year when we were learning about how to do this and how, you know, what the tutorials were. And she said to me after, she said, you know, I watched those videos of what they were showing us a tutorial is supposed to look like, and I thought, eighth graders are never gonna get to get there. And she was very impressed with what they did in the tutorials last week when we had people in watching. So, they've come a long way and it's, that was a struggle in itself, getting them used to that format. So, I'll just read a couple of comments, and one was, I was in the Avid program all year and would like to say Avid was a great experience, it taught me many things.
And we did everything, this is the one girl who's gonna be here to talk about the organization and just learning about colleges, meaning talk about colleges a lot. What does it mean about a college, you know, do we talk, what do you think of college? You know, what is it, what do you see when you saw St. Olive Carlton? So, just getting the seat plan in the mind that, you know, I can't go to college.
Did anybody bring a binder tonight?
No, we didn't have, it's all right.
Their, part of the program is they keep a binder, so that we teach a lot of organizational skills and their binders are now at least this thick. And when they got them, they were like this, and I'm sure they thought they would never fill them up, but they have. And they haven't lasted a year, they're probably all gonna get tossed because they've been used. Another one is, mm, Avid has helped me a lot, like last year, I always lost my stuff, but now I'm in Avid, I find stuff right away, and last year I got two Fs and mostly Cs and Ds, but now I'm getting Bs and As, that's why I think Avid is a good class. Tutorials are helpful because they help you one on four, and I like it. And this one is one of my favorites. Avid has changed my school career, it made me understand math when I believe I, when I believed I couldn't pass algebra. I appreciate Mr. Grabguard's kindness for leading to this ceremony, which was a couple of weeks ago. So, I think, we can clap, we should clap for them.
Well, thank you all for coming, one last question, did you say you visited St. Olive and Carlton?
Yes.
The next time you go to St. Olive, you have to let me know, and I'll give you the inside scoop.
It's changed a lot.
Yeah, I think I just say, you mentioned earlier that this is the first year of a program and I think part of the program is to help you guys become our future leaders and I don't think you'll have a better experience than being the very first class of a program like Avid. I know on the board, we were very excited to hear about it, excited to see it implemented. So, I'm sure I speak for the rest of the board when I say we're just tickled to see you here tonight and thank you for coming and sharing with us.
And I hope they can come back when they're the first Avid graduating class.
Absolutely, we look forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we had another big event in the school district today. Richard mentioned it earlier, and that was the groundbreaking for the, for the new fitness center was today. And so, I was not able to attend, I was giving a final at the St. Olive. And, but Richard and Deb were, so maybe you guys want to say just a couple of words about the event?
It was wonderful, it was, it was fun to go, there was tons of people there. We, everyone kept saying they didn't think anyone was gonna show up, except the Booster Club and Todd. So, it was fun to see everybody there, there was the girls' fast pitch team, some of the boys' track team that showed up, and a lot of community people, it was really fun. They were nice people and it was great to hear their stories.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of generosity in the community, of coming, you know, giving money, you know, just great. And the, the big donor from, flew in from Ohio. In fact, he gave another, another thirty thousand for the flooring. Instead of a concrete floor, it's gonna be like a rubberized floor if I'm not mistaken. Kevin Wright?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, so it was a lot of people and it's gonna be, you're starting soon, I think, finish before school starts.
That's the goal, yes.
The goal.
Yep, and I've, I've got one thing to show too.
This is cool.
Just show you the shovel, first of all, thanks to Richard and Deb for, for being there, that was great. I was very appreciative of seeing the, the school, some school board reps at the meeting. But this was the shovel that we used to start the project, that was our first hole dug and it was a nice event. The Fairville Daily News did a nice job covering it and we're very excited. It'll also be on the local media station too, I know Troy was there, so, very nice. It'll be the new Bob Felix Center and, what do they call it?
The Bob.
The Bob.
The Bob.
They, they, Ken Huber coined the phrase, "The Bob", and he wants everyone to know that one day, everyone's gonna go, "I go, I go to The Bob every day," or, you know.
So, thanks to Chad Wolf and the Athletic Boosters for all their fundraising in the community, Mr. Carlander, Joe and Linda Claperty were the big donors from Ohio that donated not $200,000, but we were still short some of the floor, so then he donated another $30,000, so, to get the mondo floor that we wanted. So, it's, it's been a very, very positive piece. And you just saw one shining star of our school district come forward with the Avid program. This is another shining star that just makes our school look better and better and better, so that was terrific.
And I'll say one more thing, that's something that I learned today is, if you donate a hundred dollars, you can have your name on a wall. So, I encourage everybody to go donate a hundred dollars because it'll really show community support.
I think they're still in the process of raising funds for the equipment inside, is that, do I have that right?
That's correct.
So, they've, they've come a very long way in a very short period of time. It's been one of the joys of being on the board this last year to see that Booster Club come together and do some remarkable things, so I know we're all very excited about it. So, congratulations today on that event and we're excited to see it.
Yeah, it's gonna be first-class equipment, most of it donated by the supplier.
Sybex.
So, you're paying, I don't know what percentage is, but, but for that, they want to show that off as a first-class fitness center and bring clients over to show this, what you can have in your school, so.
Yep.
Excellent. All right, so now, as promised a little earlier, we come to the community comment time. So, this is a time for members of the community to come forward and address the board if they have any topics they would like to speak on. There's a limit of three minutes per speaker and fifteen minutes per topic, so I'll see if there's any members of the community here tonight. All right, seeing none, we will move on to the next item on the agenda. All right, next up is the consent agenda, as presented to the board. Any discussion on the consent agenda as a whole?
I have one item that we'd, I'd like removed from the consent agenda, item C, additional assignments and other. The extended leave of absence for Diane Nagy, I'd like to have pulled out and done separately.
So, we will look at that item separately?
Mister Chair, I'd like to pull out the individual contracts, I think they're the last round of contracts we have to settle this year, is that correct, Todd?
I believe so, that's the last, is that the last set for this school year, 2012?
The only two that I have left in the quota, so we have two more in place.
Oh, okay, two more, sorry, I thought it was two, so two more.
Most of the individual contracts are here. And how do I pull out to recognize a teacher, can I, can, because she's gonna retire, just?
Yeah, just whichever one.
Just make a comment now, I don't think we need to.
Oh, you'd have to pull it out with, uh, a teacher, which I know quite well, helped my boy through school. Angie Nolan Johnson, it's, it can be a tremendous loss to our district, but fine teacher, specialized teacher, and hopefully she has a good retirement, so I just wanted to recognize her.
Okay, so let me just make sure I'm clear on the, on the items that we are removing. So, we have, I don't know how many individual contracts right now, they're not popping up here. So, we have Diane Nagy for the leave of absence is being pulled. How many individual contracts do we have to pull? Do we have that in front of you?
I have in front.
There's quite a few.
Eight, I believe.
No.
Individual.
Individual, I think there's about, could be about thirty.
Forty-three pages, but I don't know if they're all, do you know how many?
Some of the contracts are several people.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, yes.
Some are individual, and then some are group.
So, Richard, could you help me out and be more specific about exactly what you're wanting to pull out?
Not the ones that, oh boy, it's just all the individual contracts, I don't know what page.
It's page five of the consent agenda, item B.
Not those, not those.
So, you don't want those, okay?
Not those, and starting on page?
Okay.
That's, that's one of the contracts.
Starting in page eight.
Yes.
Page eight, Mister Chair.
Or page three, there's some people. On mine, it's page three out of forty-three.
Okay, I see where you're looking now.
Yeah, mine's page three out of forty-three also.
That's about higher than you.
And it's the same thing as you have, though.
Okay.
All right, so it is, we're starting on item B, is that right?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so are there a number of agenda, or there's a, so is everything after that then something that we'll be removing? Is that correct, Richard?
Yeah, the individuals, but they're grouped into several contracts, but there's several people per contract, correct Kathy?
Yes.
Should be about thirty people.
Okay. All right, so to, so which items are we looking at? I don't, I'm sorry, I'm having a little trouble navigating here.
That page eight, that's where I'm starting. Page eight, I think.
Right, so I'm looking for item numbers to, to remove, is what I'm looking for, are they all item B?
Yes.
Yeah, they're all B items, yes.
We're removing item B essentially then.
Um, no, the first part of item B is, like, the, um, teachers for, custodians and some new people for school age childcare. The first two pages, or pages halfway.
Yeah.
The pages you have.
After this one.
So, he's not, recommendation to higher, yep, those are their old papers.
I think I understand, so starting with item B. Page three on the, that particular item, all right.
Right.
Starting with the pay increase for Mark, I don't know how to say that last name.
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday. Okay, does everybody understand what's been removed from the consent agenda? Any further comments on the rest of the consent agenda? Richard, maybe now, is it, oh, you already mentioned it, you already spoke about, about the teaching you wanted to do.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so hearing no questions or comments on the consent agenda, I will entertain a motion to approve.
So, in order.
Yeah. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, actually, I'm sorry, we did your roll call, my mistake.
Richard?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
And I guess, so five zero. And it passes.
All right, then, let's go through these individual contracts on item B, starting with Mark Chisum. Questions or comments on this, this item? Maybe Todd, do you want to say something just in general about how these contracts were settled? So that we, I suspect they're all similar in the way that they were settled, so.
They are, and I don't, I mean, Nicole's done a lot of the work on it, so it might be more appropriate to have her come up. She's, we've certainly given her some guidance, but she was really in the, on the nitty-gritty for those. The, the parameters that we set before, when the teacher's contract was settled, is to stay within that percent or lower. And then, if the contract pay was actually higher than what the teachers were making, then we were gonna try to stay around that dollar amount, between the dollar amount and the percents. So, the idea was to never go above what the teachers settled and then try to negotiate lower than what the teacher settled, as long as it was a fair negotiation. So, that kind of summarizes it, Nicole, if you want to add more to the detail? I think we tried to keep, you can talk about the language and information about that.
Yeah, Todd's exactly right, one of the, one of the things that we did do with all the contracts is we made the insurance language consistent with all of them. So, everyone had the option, the contribution and then the option for a Viva health insurance plan and also each SA health insurance, so everyone had that consistent language throughout all the contracts. We also did, as Pat mentioned, we kind of drew a line in the sand. If anyone above teachers got a increase that was comparable to what our administrators or principals received, and then anyone below them got an increase that was more comparable to what our teachers got.
Percentage-wise.
Percentage-wise, yes. There were a handful of people that we, actually, there were only about two people that we had to address, actually, three people that we had to address this way with the comparable study that we did. So, those people, if we found they were making a higher salary than what their points basically said they should be based, based on our poll, salary district-wide, then we kept them at a smaller percentage so that they would still get something, but they would, they would kind of be slowed down so that other folks could have time to catch up to them.
All right, thank you, Nicole. Questions or comments on, on these contracts, we can take them one by one perhaps?
On the comparable worth, I know we went through this, that, you know, people that you, then you bring them up to a certain level, but then you just mentioned that they were above the study and then we don't cut them, we don't cut their wages to bring it down to the level, then we actually increase, a little bit, whatever it is, an increase, that's sort of surprising that if they're above the study worth, then we're still increasing.
If, we did, if, we, we decided that it would be more of a demotivator to our staff if we froze their salary, because they're, they're people that are doing good jobs. And our recommendation that we received from Springs that will help us with the study was basically to address those people that their points are higher than, or their salary's higher than what their points say they should be, was to address them when somebody retires. That would be more of a fair way, rather than to cut their salary then.
And of these individual contracts, what's, what's total amount, I mean, I don't know if you have it or Colleen, and average per person of these individual contracts, I think there's about thirty or so.
It's been, you know, being, I will talk to every per person because they're so, they're so.
The percent, if you did a percent average, you can pretty safely guess that the percent average is under five percent for two years, or less, and it goes down depending on the scale. Some of the people who were at the, the comparable worth that were higher points, we gave lesser increases rather than a zero. So, the idea is to hopefully the people with, that are in the wrong spots with the, with the comparable worth pay will eventually catch up. So, there's some rhyme and reason towards what we negotiated, but we still had, we still have to abide by the law and negotiate in good faith, so that was, was where we're at. So, anyway, the principals were, do you remember, I don't remember what the percent was for the principals.
The percent was four point six seven over, for two years.
Yep. So, and the teachers were five and?
Five point s, five seven.
Five point five seven.
Over two years.
Yep.
So, it's about comparable.
Yeah, yep.
So, we did not have any contracts that settled for more than what the teacher's percentage was.
All right, any other further comments? All right, let's tackle these one by one here, starting with the contract for Mr. Chisum.
Mister Chair, I'd like to group all these now.
You'd like to group them all together?
Yes, sir, I'll certainly.
I'll certainly.
They, they answered all their.
I won't disagree with that, so. Would you like to make a motion to such effect?
Uh, yes, I'd like to group all these into one vote, all the individual contracts, they've answered all of my questions.
All right, excellent, okay, so we have a, a motion to, to approve these, these contracts, is there a second?
Seven.
All right, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion?
Can I just get clarification on the motion? Was the motion to group the contracts or was the motion to approve the contracts?
So, I guess I took it as a motion to approve all the contracts as a group, but if.
Combine and approve.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Combine and approve.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, I sort of automatically combine those two things if.
Yeah, okay.
That is the motion at this time to combine these and approve them, so a yay vote will, will accomplish that. Okay? Uh, we likely need to do a, a roll call on this, that seemed fair. All right, so any further discussion before the vote? Hearing none, uh, Mister Kretsch, you'll please take a roll call.
Richard Olson?
No.
Jason?
Yes.
Ingrid? Deb Davis?
Yes.
Todd Gaskor?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes for four to one, and the motion passes.
All right. Next item that was removed from the, uh, from the consent agenda was from item C, the request for a leave of absence for Diane Nagy. Do you want to say anything about this, Todd, before we discuss it?
Yeah, it's just, it's a request for a leave and there's, historically, we have given leave to Ms. Nagy and at this time through, my suggestion is that we no longer approve this leave and then Ms. Nagy will have to either come back and teach for us or, or make a decision not to come back. And then she has the option of presenting this to the board too, and that's why she's now presented to the board.
Todd, can I ask how many of you have been requested at this point, do you know?
Is it?
For this individual, like she has been on the since twelve six seven.
Thank you.
Thanks.
When, when does she have to decide if she's going to work or quit? Is there a limit?
It's just up to the board. The board can actually approve an infinite number of leaves if they want.
Right, so this is, uh, at our discretion whether or not we'd like to approve this, uh, um, this leave. Um, any comments on, on this? Okay. Um, I'll, I'll just say, I, I do think there is a point at which, uh, we need to be a little careful about extending, uh, leaves, uh, unless there's extraordinary circumstances, and, and then this request, I'm not seeing any described. Uh, so I do think it's, it's, uh, it becomes unfair to the district at some point, um, when after quite a few years, uh, uh, someone has a, is still trying to make a decision whether or not they'll come back to work, so. Um, on a personal note, I'll, I'll say, I'm not in favor of granting this leave. Any, any other comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion, uh, to, uh, well, I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny, if anybody wants to make a mo- a motion.
I move to deny the leave of absence.
So we have a motion to deny, uh, the leave of absence, is there a, a second?
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second to deny the leave of absence. Uh, do we need to do a roll on this, anybody know?
It's not a resolution, you can just vote.
Alright, so, um, all, any further discussion on this, this motion? All those in favor, uh, of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Alright, um, item number six in the agenda, um, the curriculum. Uh, we have some minutes from the last, uh, meeting we presented to you tonight. Uh, Marley are here someplace. I don't have any papers in front of me, did you steal mine?
No, I don't think so.
There we go. Alright. Alright. Uh, so you have the minutes in front of you, maybe, uh, Tom, if you wanna tell us something about this meeting?
Certainly. Um, we met, uh, on Tuesday, May fifteenth. Um. The primary topic, uh, of discussion was the proposed levy. Uh, Todd Sesker and, uh, Colleen Metzendorf, uh, did present, uh, some details to the, uh, the committee members, uh, similar to what we heard at our last work session. In terms of, uh, what the impact, uh, might be, and you know, that, there were some questions and, and good responses to that, so that I think that my feeling was that the committee was well informed about that. Um, I unfortunately had to leave before the meeting was over. I did meet with, uh, Joanne Ostrom the following day to get a report, and, um, the committee, uh, made a motion to, uh, recommend to the board that, uh, the board approved going for a levy. They were concerned about the, uh, impact on, uh, instruction should the levy not be, uh, be passed. And, uh, they reiterated their, uh, support and willingness to, to work on such a levy, should it be, uh, brought forth by the board.
Thank you, Tom. Any further questions on this item, Tom? Thank you, Tom.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, next on our agenda is, uh, the policy committee. Do you have a policy committee member?
It was canceled.
Oh, meeting canceled, it does say that.
Yeah, because it was like over half of us couldn't make it.
Okay.
We did email the policy committee, uh, one of the policies on there, and so they could review it, and we didn't hear any feedback. I mean, we heard feedback, but it was all positive about it, so, and that'll come up on item, letter D.
Yeah, the, the policy for first reading.
Yep.
Okay. Um, so we have, uh, a, a number of our policies in front of us, uh, for our second reading. Uh, those are policy two oh two, uh, related to school board officers. Uh, policy five oh do, five oh two, which regulates search of students' lockers, desk, personal possessions, and students' person. Um, and policy five twenty four, internet acceptable use and safety policy. These are here in front of us for our second reading, which means tonight we'll take action on those and, and act on them. Uh, questions or comments on any of those, uh, those policies?
Are these just MSBA standards?
Uh, no, they are, they, we take them from the boiler, but then the, we give, like, the internet acceptable use policy goes to the tech committee, and they revamp it, then the policy reviews it, and then they make sure that everything's all lined up, and then we bring it to the board. So some of it has been changed to reflect what we're doing in our school, but it's basically from the MSBA.
Any other questions on these policies? Hearing none, none, I'll suggest that we act on these, uh, in one motion. Uh, so I'll entertain a motion at this time to, uh, adopt, uh, all of these policies.
So.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt policy two oh two, uh, related to school board officers, policy five oh two, uh, search of students' lockers, desk, personal possessions, and students' person. And policy five twenty four, internet acceptable use and safety policy. Um, any further questions or comments on these items? Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, now, as usual, when we adopt some policies, usually they're replacing ones we've had before, so in front of us are, uh, um, the abolishment of the old policies, which have these same numbers and roughly the same names. Um, so I'll entertain a motion to abolish, uh, policy, uh, old policy two oh two, uh, school board officers adopted eleven fifteen, two thousand ten. Uh, old policy five oh two point one zero, search of students' lockers, desk, personal possessions, and students' person, adopted, uh, three seven, two thousand five, and revised in nine twenty five, two thousand six. And policy five twenty four, internet acceptable use and safety policy, adopted, uh, ten eighteen, two thousand ten, and revised four eighteen, two thousand eleven. Um, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, rescind, uh, that mouthful.
Mr. Chairman, will we rescind those policies, uh, indicated?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for rescis- uh, to rescind those. Um, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Uh, motion carries. Uh, we also then have in front of us, uh, item seven D, uh, policy eight oh seven, uh, the health and safety policy, it's here tonight in front of us for a first reading. Uh, so this is the time to look it over and see if we have any questions or comments on it. Anything for, for Todd or for the, uh, policy committee to think about?
Just a comment with this policy, I don't know if you remember the old attachment ninety nine forms that we used to have to fill out, that, uh, came up with whole health and safety plan, that were very, very long and tedious. This replaces a lot of that, and it's really a qualifier for us to, um, get our health and safety revenue dollars, so, it's a boiler from MSBA, and, uh, we thought it'd be an easy one to pass. At least for the first reading. And if you have questions, you can always go back the second time around.
Any further questions or comments? Alright, hearing none, uh, we'll, uh, allow the policy committee to take another look at that, their next meeting. Um, and it'll come back to us one month from now, I'm sure, uh, for our second reading, and we'll take action on it. Alright, uh, next on the agenda, uh, item number eight, uh, the finance committee. Uh, we have some minutes in front of us, uh, we do not have a treasurer here with us tonight, um.
Those minutes are on the website, or on the workbook.
Right, they're on, they're on workbook, yep. Um, would, uh, another member, Richard, would you like to comment on the, uh?
Yeah, we had, uh.
Or, or Howard, or you can. Um. Go ahead.
Howard can fill in if I missed something here, that we had a finance committee and we had a resignation of a, um, public member, Simon Zeller, due to work, so we're trying to fill that position. We're gonna advertise in the paper, Colleen, is that correct? Okay. And some of these other items will be on our agenda for our approval, and, uh, we also talked about some bid openings and parking lots, and also on the new fitness center. Um, that's pretty much it, we talked about the food service, which we presented, Lori Deal. And that's, next meeting is June eleventh at seven thirty at the district office.
Alright, any further questions? Our comments, Howard?
No, it's good.
Okay then, we'll start, uh, going through the items as brought to us by the finance committee, starting with the item eight B one, uh, the medical assistance program billing consultant agreement. Who wants to bring that to us?
Good evening. The, uh, agreement for the independent contracting services for, uh, Therese Romey is attached to your packet. Therese has been, um, we have been contracting with Therese for a few years now. Uh, she carries out the duties of, uh, managing the MA billing process for the district. She does a wonderful job, she has increased our, uh, revenue, uh, considerably over the, the last couple of years, and, um, she does all of the training of all of our staff. Uh, d- um, keeps up to date with all of the, um, all of the new regulations that, that come from the Department of Health Services, uh, and, and Minnesota Department of Education in combination. And, uh, this is the annual contract for her to, for her services for this, for the school year.
Any questions or comments for show? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the medical assistance program billing consultant agreement. Um, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Alright, um, uh, next item on the agenda is a resolution twelve oh eight for the twenty twelve, twenty thirteen membership with the Minnesota State High School League.
If you wanna be a member of the State High School League, please approve this.
Mr., thank you. Okay. Any questions or comments on this item?
It's kind of an old brighter, I think.
Alright, uh. I'll, uh, entertain a motion at this time to accept the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to adopt the resolution twelve oh eight, uh, for the twenty twelve, twenty thirteen membership with Minnesota State High School League. Uh, this is a resolution, so we need to do a roll call.
Uh, Richard Ol- Richard Olson?
Aye.
Jason Ingrid?
Aye.
Deb Davis?
Aye.
Tom Gasper?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. For five to one, or five to zero. Passes.
Um, item, uh, eight B three, uh, Clifton Larson Allen, uh, for frisked year, twenty eleven, twenty twelve audit.
Do you wanna talk to this? I, it's just, it's the, um, audit that we're looking at for our independent audit that we do every single year, and our recommendation is to go with this firm again, and you can see what the cost is for the firm, I think you can also see the history of what the cost has been, and I think because of what Colleen and Andy have done internally, we have saved quite a bit of money over the last few years, just on our audit. And there's others involved too, but, I mean, Colleen and Andy have done a great job.
Thank you. Um, I would just ask, uh, um, how the timing of this year's audit will relate to past years, I know we ended up, uh, and a few years ago, being bumped later because we had to, um, organize things a little bit more, are we, will we forward in that to get it done?
Yes, I think our, um, audit dates are set for mid to late September, which is about a month earlier than last year, which is about two months earlier, from a couple of years ago.
Excellent.
So we, September is about as early as we can get, just because of the way the state finalizes things, so we're in a good spot for this one.
And there's no New Gatsby?
Yep, no New Gatsby stuff or.
So September is, is probably the timeline, and we'll, we'll stay at for the future.
Yes, that, that would be our practice.
Excellent. Great. Thank you, Colleen. I commented at the, the meeting, uh, at our last meeting, and I think, uh, I'll just make the comment again now, that, uh, on a number of occasions, I've had members of the public tell me that we ought to get, uh, an external auditor in to look at the school districts finances, uh, for fear that something desperately wrong is going on, and, and, uh, I have to let them know that we do an external audit every single year. Um, I think it's a great idea, and that's why we do it every single year. And so this is, again, our, uh, required audit for the year, uh, which is, uh, of course, good practice. Um, alright, at this time, I, uh, will entertain a motion, uh, to approve, uh, this, uh, is this a, uh, an agreement, what are we approving here officially? This is, uh, the contract?
Yes.
Um, so we'll, uh, I'll entertain a motion at this time to approve, uh, the audit.
I move we approve, uh, Larson Allen, Clifton Larson Allen as our, uh, auditors for this coming year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, uh, any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Um, next item on the agenda, eight B four, the food service report. Runs from SecExo, or, or forward to share with us?
Thank you for giving me just a few minutes to kinda talk about, uh, what we've been doing this year, other than just breakfast and lunch, try to do a few other things. Uh, personally, I can attest that it is a very thorough audit, because we're also part of that process too, so, they do a great job. Uh, the first three items on the list are something that we kinda started as an annual tradition, one of them being the A to Z salad bar in March. Uh, it's kind of a two-day event, just because we can't get all, all the items in one day. Uh, we can provide, uh, different items, uh, using the alphabet, different fruits and vegetables that, uh, students get to sample, and they've enjoyed it, which I'm very glad, because now they're gonna start doing a lot of fruits and vegetables, which I'll talk about here, they have in the presentation, but it's been a, a fun thing, we hear a lot of comments, you know, could, we have it every day, um, that would be a little bit much, but we, we're glad they're enjoying the process there. The Dr. Seuss contest is.
Can I ask one question, what's X?
What's X?
They kinda skipped some letters in there.
On the A to Z salad bar, what's X?
Well, sometimes we do extra fancy star fruit.
Okay, okay.
That's a great possible one.
Thank you.
The Dr. Seuss contest is fun for us, because we get to do something non-food related. Uh, what we do is, uh, a contest, uh, for Ravi, actually, and students submit stories to the food service team. This year we had over three hundred and eight, three hundred and eighty story submissions, and I really wanna thank the teachers that were involved in that process, the students. It is fun for us, and I'm truly glad I don't have to grade papers on a daily basis, because, heads off to them, that, that's a tough decision. They do a great job, and we enjoy doing the contest and, and seeing all their creativity. Next, uh, farm to school is, uh, what we've been doing, and Colleen and I have some ideas for the future. We've had Bushaboy in the past, uh, this past year, we had, uh, the cheesecakes, a fair bowl, come in and talk about their cheese process, tried some root cheese, cheddar cheese, which was exciting, but it's always in September. State of Minnesota kinda doesn't give, September is farm to school month, but I think it's, everybody knows September, back to school, there is a lot going on at that time, so it's kinda hard to schedule a lot. Colleen and I would like to try maybe doing something with the summer program next year, not this year, we just wanna try and get the food out there this year, but uh, I think next year, uh, incorporating different ideas with farm to school and the summer program would be a great process, so, that's what we've done, and what we're looking forward to in the future. Statistics, um, the team has been doing fantastic with lunch participation. This is for type A meals, a full meals with all the components, fruits and vegetables, grains, dairy. I wanna note, the high school, they've gone from sixty one percent to sixty seven percent, which is fantastic. The national average for high schools, fifty one percent participation. We're at sixty seven. Kathy Hager, Judy Wells, and the high school team have done fantastic with trying to adjust menus to what the students like, and they haven't added cookies and desserts or anything like that, to get them to participate. They've just done a great job. Breakfast participation, middle school and high school have also done well, going from nine to eighteen percent at the middle school, and two to nine percent. I know those are low numbers, but, again, that's a full breakfast, trying to get, bring the kids in before school starts. I know those are low numbers, but again, that's a full breakfast, trying to get, bring the kids in before school starts. It's increasing slowly, but surely, it's definitely increasing. Okay, now, if anybody doesn't know, we're offering a summer food service program. I guess we haven't read the newspaper, seen the website. Just some facts to clarify, because I'm hearing some different things out there. First of all, this is a USDA funded program. This is not a school district funded program, this is not a Sedexo funded program. This is a United States Department of Agriculture funded program. We qualify based on census data. We have an economic opportunity in our area here, so we would qualify via the census, meaning an open site. Any student, child, eighteen years or younger, come to the high school for breakfast and lunch and eat for free. If someone lives in Fairbowl and they've got some relatives from Idaho, Montana visiting them, bring them along. If they're eighteen or under, we will feed them. We're not going to ask for ID, we're not going to ask if they're in a program. They can walk in and get breakfast between seven thirty and eight thirty, lunch between eleven and twelve thirty. All the food does have to be eaten in the cafeteria. We have some, a couple of times where celebrities will be serving lunch. On June twelfth, we have our esteemed superintendent, Todd, will be serving with the mayor of Fairbowl on June twelfth. If any board members would love to come, we have lots of aprons and hats and jerseys available. My boss and his boss will probably be in on June fourteenth and we'll put them to work, no problem.
Lori, I got a question. Will this, do you think this will become an unfunded mandate? You know, because USDA is doing it, they say, okay, now we're gonna turn it over to Sedexo and the school district. Do you think it?
No, if that came in there.
Do you think it will eventually? All of a sudden, yeah, they're paying for it, well, which is greedy of us, but, but direct to the district.
I think anything is possible. I, I don't, I think the likelihood of this one is mainly because of the criteria, what it's based on, it's, it's pretty straightforward, but I.
It's been around for years. It was part of a bigger program in the late sixties, early seventies. So thi- this is nothing new. It's, anybody who's worked like in the Twin Cities, they've been doing it for years. Even though we've been doing it from two thousand and six, this program is, is very established.
There's a less likelihood of it in the food service than the general fund. How's that?
It's a, it's a team effort to actually get this program up and going, from not only my staff, who is volunteered to work. They're getting paid, but they've decided to give up some of their summer vacation. Custodial staff, transportation, I met with Garrett again last Friday. He's got Plan A through Plan Z on, on the transportation. Nicole being involved with trying to hire some cafeteria supervisors. Colleen, I think I bug her every single day, what about this, do we think of that? And, and, you know, Todd agreeing to serve. This is a whole team effort to satisfy a need in the community. And we hear it firsthand that there are students who are hungry out there. We hear it right on the line. This isn't something that, oh, it's free money, so we're just gonna do it. There are a significant number of people out there who really need this program and we're excited to be able to provide it to them. So we have, we did a grassroots outreach program where Kathy Hager and I went out and went to the libraries and community centers, Chamber of Congress, we went to, where do we, library, churches, cable TV, anywhere you could, we went. And, well, it's June fourth to August third, we're closed July fourth, and we hope to see everybody there. Any questions on the summer program before going to the next one?
All right, I may have missed this, and you may have said it, but how many do you expect to show up?
A lot. Breakfast, because there's, we aren't providing any transportation for breakfast. We, we think we'll just capture pretty much the high school and the students are coming in for those activities. And maybe Jefferson, like Kids World, might walk over, so maybe a hundred for breakfast. Anywhere from four hundred to a thousand for lunch, we would like. We have no idea. This is like planning a party and you just invited everybody out of baseball.
So does that end up, if you, if you plan for a lot and you get a few?
Well, then, we'll go out and grab, you know, well, no. We'll just keep word of mouth and I think, I think there's enough that need the, the service that we're gonna be providing. Colleen assures me that if we build it, they won't help. We just don't know and I won't sleep until we get started, so.
I think that was a baseball field in Iowa, wasn't that? I just had to get that in there, so, sorry.
We're gonna give it our best shot.
That's gotta be quite a challenge.
Well, I did the groundbreaking ceremony for the Gonda Building at the Mayo Clinic and they just said, be ready to feed the city of Rochester. So we survived that and I think we'll survive this. We've got a great team, the entire group that's pitching in, we'll be fine.
Good luck.
Yeah, thanks, we feel needed. The final page on the report, it's getting closer to being definite. H A F K A, Healthy Hunger Pre-Kids Act, that was the, the act that's become a law. It's basically an overhaul of the lunch program and the breakfast program, which hasn't been done in about thirty years. And I just wanted to touch on some highlights, because it started at the, the government level, federal government, and then it rolled out to the states. Right now, each state is trying to determine how they're going to count the grains, how they're gonna count the fruits and the vegetables. And, and the state of Minnesota is still scrambling to get all that information to us. These are just some highlights, but we don't have the final documentation yet. Some of the items, half of the grains are, must be whole grain rich by July twenty fourteen. We're already there with all of our menus, so that part is good. The grain requirements have been decreased, meaning they want to take some of the bright items off the, the menus. The biggest thing that, that we know for sure is that students will have to take at least a half a cup of fruits or vegetables at lunch. Every single type A meal, lunch tray will have to have a half a cup of fruit or half a cup of vegetable on it to qualify. That's gonna be the biggest challenge. There'll be a lot of marketing, a lot of training that I'll need to do with the teachers and the students and my staff. But they're gonna decrease calories, they're gonna decrease sodium. Luckily, they're giving us ten years to do a lot of that. No trans fats, we've already taken those out. Breakfast regulations aren't gonna start until twenty thirteen and this is gonna cost a little bit to implement. The government said we'll pay school districts cents, because you're gonna have to increase your fruits and vegetables. But they're gonna give it to the school district, the state of Minnesota said that's fine, school district can keep it, but they can't pass it along to us. So that's a little bit of a challenge and everyone will make that work too.
So the fifty-eight thousand, is that for what, for the verbal?
That's my cost, that's Sedexo's cost to implement the fruits and vegetables.
And we get it, but we can't give it back to you?
Exactly.
Unfunded, unfunded mandate.
Pretty much.
Well, it is for you, but the school district gets it.
Right.
What's the logic behind that?
I'm still trying to figure that one out. Next year, I believe there will be an open bid where all the competitors come in. I think at that time, everybody will, will put in the piercing cost and then Colleen will look at all the, the bids. But for the first year, we have to implement the program, but we won't have the, the money to do it, so.
But it might be retroactive then, is that kind of what you're saying, no?
Is it because some school districts have their own food service?
Well, Illinois, they're allowed to pay the contractors, Missouri, they're allowed to pay the contractors. This is just state Minnesota.
It truly is a state of Minnesota and there's a difference between self-operation, whereas the school district has its own staff doing it, and the food service management companies. And the state of Minnesota has taken the stance that we have a contract with, not we, all of the districts who do contracting. You have a contract with that food service provider and the increase that they can take on a renewal is capped at CPI. So you cannot go above that unless you want to open up the contract for rebid. So that's their stance on this. Other states have looked at that differently, because obviously there are huge requirements that are being changed. So unless we wanted to open up the contract, which it was virtually too late to do that. And this was a couple of weeks ago that they finally decided that that's the way it was going to be. So it's unfortunate that we can't pass that along, because there will be increased costs for Sedexo.
But do I understand right, Colleen, then that shouldn't be a permanent place for the sex? The next time that the contract is negotiated, that can, that can be counted for. Because we're in the middle of the contract and we're not allowed to renegotiate that contract.
Right, it shouldn't hopefully just be a one-year situation.
Thank you very much, Colleen.
Well, thank you.
Oh, well, it's so bad to the, it's so bad to the, the main cause and the main reason why we're here and has to feed our students in the school district. So making sure everybody's fed and, and nutritionally is, is important. But really want to make sure the summer program is successful, so if you'd like to stop out anytime, we'd love to see anybody.
Can you promise me that Todd will have to serve me lunch?
We don't get to eat.
You don't get to eat, you're a great team.
Can I pay for it?